Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, October thirteenth. I will now take off my mask since I'm speaking and everybody is a long, long way from me. So glad to have everybody here this evening. Let the record show that all the counselors are here and they all appear to be happy. Good evening, everybody. First, let's go to the minutes of the September eighth meeting and do they meet with everybody's approval?
I move to approve the minutes of September eighth as delivered.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Martin Willis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? I hear no opposition, the motion carries, thank you very much. There is no one here who wants to make any public comment. So we're going to continue. We're going to go slightly off script here at the beginning of my mayor's report. I'd like to defer to counselor Hicks, who has a bit of a family announcement. Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, thank you. I've been real hesitant to talk about past year at council. But being that it's kind of an open secret in town, I figured I could share some news. For those that aren't aware, last October, my daughter was diagnosed with a very aggressive form of leukemia. And so this last year has been a lot of up and downs. But we just finished another round of chemo. And I'm happy to report that as of last Thursday, she is completely cancer free. And we are hoping that that will. And if the donor goes through, we're next, she's going to be getting her second bone marrow transplant early next month. And I just want to say thank you to staff and and my fellow counselors, you've been awesome throughout all this. And it sounds a little weird, but this this position's been kind of cathartic, being able to bury myself into something that's not cancer related. So thank you very much.
Thanks to Counselor Hicks for sharing and we are all thrilled. There's clapping everywhere through town and. This is a big deal for all of us and we're so glad that the news is good and and we pray that things will continue going the right direction. Thank you for sharing with us. Under my report, the first thing is I library board appointment that is in your packet. Steve Scheck has been recommended to be appointed to the library board. And this is an action item.
I move to approve the appointment of Stephen Scheck. And I second that.
Have a motion, a second discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, I hear no opposition, motion carries, thank you very much. Under my report this evening, I have several things I'd like to share. I've had the pleasure this last week to have participated with a ribbon cutting for the CSC program on a local sidewalk. Many of you know that that's a program affiliated with the school district where they take young people and they're teaching them con- concrete work. But it's direct application of of math, work ethic, and all the things that folks need for good jobs. It also allows a local homeowner to get some sidewalk repair done that needs to be done. So it makes the sidewalk better for the whole community, helps the homeowner, the students learn real skills from the from the trades. And when they complete the program, they have a job skill that they can go out and get a family wage job immediately. So it was very, I really enjoyed the opportunity to be cutting the ribbon and cheering for a number of people. And you know, the local workforce board, economic development, Sean Irvine and Tom here. It was a victory on all fronts, so I just wanted to to do a shout out for that one. Second thing is that also along ribbon cutting, last Friday had the opportunity to participate with about sixty other people, all socially distanced, distanced. And spread out for the ribbon cutting at parallel forty-five in the old city hall. It's a project that they've been working on for a number, a long, long time. And it's really nice, the inside looks great. They've got their side of the outside looking wonderful, everything goes up. It's a great opportunity, another new business opening in Independence. As previously reported, many of you know that I'm on the governor's regional solutions team. The advisory committee for Marion Polk in Yamhill County, and we're focused on economic development and moving things forward in the region. With the fires that took place in up the Sandy Am Canyon, we've been redirected to be part of the Sandy Am Canyon Economic Recovery Efforts. We're now meeting weekly and will be advising the state on where. Where resources should be used. Because I gotta tell you, with as much fire is up there, I just read in the paper today, they had thirty thousand trees, they just had to move just to open the road. And the challenges that they're going to be facing in many of those smaller communities, the sewer pipes have melted underground. And how do you lay out a whole new city from the ground up and the financing and all those things? So I just wanted to let you know that along with many of the commissioners from around the region, other mayors that working on that. And finally. This city continues to help small local businesses with business support. We've done a number of grants and loans for small businesses and I've had the pleasure presenting checks to many of those folks. But I'm really happy to announce that with consultation with city staff, many of those. Checks were partially loan and partially grant. We've now been able to go through and the loans will now all become grants so that there is no more loan that they have to pay. And so able to help a number of the small businesses, which makes a real difference. And I want to put a shout out to Sean Irvine, Tom Pesamere, the folks at the Midlambert Valley Council of Governments and others. Who helped go through the paperwork to make this possible using some of that federal cares money. So this is really good for everybody and it really has helped a lot of the local businesses. So that's the end of my report and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pesamere for his city manager report.
So thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna pause myself and. Yeah, so thank you, Mayor. So yeah, I have a number of things to report on tonight. So to start off with, you may all heard that there is an election coming up. And we have a drop site here at the city hall. It's inside our front lobby area. And I just wanted to let everybody know, since I've had some questions, we do have cameras in the lobby area. We also have cameras on the outside of the building. We will be putting up some signage, making sure that people are aware that we do have recording devices. In those areas, so if there's any questions that you hear about that, I can assure you that we we have cameras in those areas and we do all the time. We haven't added anything, it's just something we we typically have in those areas. I am happy to report that the governance, government finance officers association has again awarded us the consolidated annual. Consolidated annual financial report award for. Another year, this is something we're very proud of because we put a lot of work into making sure that document is. Is complete and thorough and well done, and so it is a high honor to get that from them. They don't give it to everyone and they certainly don't give it to you if you haven't done the hard work to to get that done. They also have another program which we are going to participate in this year, which is called the popular annual financial financial report. We won't find out for a year whether we can get award for that or not. But we do have someone who is actually coming in as an intern to help do that project. The difference between the popular annual financial report and the consolidated annual financial report is the general person or resident in the population can actually read the popular annual financial report. The consolidated annual financial report is really a tool to make sure that all government agencies are reporting in such a way. That it's understandable if you're just to look at everybody's budgets. People do budgets slightly different in different areas, they have different funds. But the consolidated annual financial report is very precise in the way you report things so that accountants can really go in and look at that. And make sure that they can easily understand how government organizations are doing things. But it doesn't really help your average residents. So we definitely are excited to get the the popular annual financial report done. We'll send that out once it is is put together, but we definitely are trying to continue to make strides in transparency and making sure that. Our residents have good information and they can they can see that. It'll be something that we want to continue because really the power in those is being able to look year over year and being able to see changes as they happen. But we're excited to actually have got that under process and look forward to getting that out. I've reported a number of times on some diversity, equity and inclusion training that we've been kind of working with Western Oregon University on. I am really happy to to continue those conversations. I believe I mentioned that they had put together a proposal, we've looked at that, it looks great. We are working on getting. People from Independence and Monmouth to both participate from both local governments there. There is a program that can actually be broken up into different timeframes. I think the university would like to do one a quarter is what they're kind of thinking. It's multiple days, it's not just one day, some of it's online and some of it's actually pretty much hands on stuff. So it's a pretty rigorous course and it takes a significant amount of time. I think it, once they finally get the program completely up and running, there can be up to sixty participants in the program. But in talking with the president of Western Oregon University, we decided to keep it between thirty and thirty-five for the first portion. So I think Independence is looking forward to putting ten people up, some of those will be police officers, some of those will be. Administrative staff and public works employees. Bonnith is looking to put the same up and we've reached out to some other local government groups to kind of allow them to get into the program, see what it's all about. We certainly could take all the spots if we wanted, but we don't think that would be a good idea as we think that spreading that out and having more inclusivity over a longer period of time. Is a better idea, so I'm just waiting to put put the final pieces together. I got a contract today from Western Oregon University to do that. Will kind of be the fiscal agent for that, just to get this off the ground up and running. And then the other agencies will just pay us back and we'll we'll get that moving forward. So I'm glad that that is continuing to to move forward and looking forward to it. Upstate update status on the museum. The plans are basically ready to approve. The building department has looked at the plans, they they look complete. And I think there's just a couple of red lines that they're going to put on the plans and we're ready to prove that. So the next step is for us to go out to bid. We want to make sure the documents were complete and there weren't missing items before we went out to bid. We plan on going out to bid probably late this week, early next, or in the middle of next week is is our goal. And we should have bids back within three or four weeks after that. Obviously, you know, it's a it's a tight bidding market, so we'll see where everything ends up, but that will come back to council before we move forward. Just so you know, we plan on coming back in November with a resolution to have a bid award on that project before we we move forward with the construction. But everything seems to be moving forward well and we're really excited to get that done. If we keep on schedule, we expect to be able to open up that museum sometime early next year. So. Just for your information, Carly asked me to let you know that she's going to be doing a tour with the. The friends group and she's going to invite council and and some other board and committee members to kind of just walk through, take a look at the plans now that they've been put together. I think she could mark out on the floor where the different walls and and things are going to go. So you'll probably get an invitation from her to to walk around here probably next week. So if you can make it, that would be great. Wanted to announce that Sedcor was the recipient of a five hundred thousand dollar EDA grant for ag innovation. And integration, I think. Sean has been talking about this for a very long time, so you probably are fairly aware, but the the goal here is to to really. Bring innovation into the agricultural market. We have a lot of agricultural around here, we have a lot of smart people, but pairing up new ideas with how to actually. Produce those crops more efficiently through technology has been something that has been done in other parts of the country. And we have been looking forward to, Sean kind of carried this for a long period of time. And then Alex from Sedcor came in and did a lot of the heavy lifting. And so we're really excited that they're actually have that grant and they can really move this forward. It's it's a regional issue and a regional solution. And so it's exciting to see that that come in, that was a big ask. The state also put money into this program as well earlier, so they're going to be able to do a lot and move a lot forward. So if you have questions on that, ask Sean. I still. Get confused as to all how that's going to work, but I think that's because I don't think anybody really knows. The reality is it's it's going to be innovative and you're going to find as you as you move through it, where the opportunities are. And you'll find new businesses that can start and grow and be successful because of that. We received from the Polk County Cultural Coalition around twenty-six thousand dollars for different art events. That really covered a lot of the costs that we had for the movies in the park in Independence Days. We're very grateful that we were able to recoup some of those monies. We certainly tried hard to keep a little bit of fun in the summer, not nearly as much as we normally do or we would have liked. But we we certainly made some valiant attempts and I know a lot of people in the community were a part of that and their efforts were appreciated. So it was very nice to to get some compensation for that and we're very appreciative of that. I talked with Brett DeMoe this afternoon about the Polk County Emergency Childcare Fund. As you know, they made those monies available and they were on a real fast track to get those monies not only done and put out. So he told me that he is sending out award letters today and they will send out a press release on Friday. So more information to follow, but the county was good to their word on trying to get that money moved out quickly. So that's also greatly appreciated of their their behalf. We have a broadband grant, which I've talked about quite a bit before and I'm happy to let you know that there are about thirty households that have been served. That represents about seventy-five kids in the Independence and Monmouth cities. We're still signing people up, still trying to reach out to make sure that we capture everyone. So if there's someone out there in the Monmouth Independence or Central School District that doesn't have broadband and lives in the cities that might not serve. We certainly can get them hooked up through this program as well as pay for their service through the end of the year, through the through the CARES Act. So that's been a lot of effort on my net's part, Sean's done a lot of work as well as Monmouth and others. So and and school districts, school districts did a lot of work trying to reach out to these and make sure that we have accurate lists when getting people hooked up. We're still working on wifi zones around strategic locations within the communities and that's going to take a little bit of while, but that's actually coming along well. And then I'm actually going to have Sean give you some updates on some of the business stuff that we've been doing. Mostly because I think it's good to give you some detailed information, we're just about to ready to release a lot of these programs. We've been talking about them for a while, but before I did, I did want to. Just add on to what the mayor said about turning the loans that we gave out into forgivable loans. And we did that for fourteen different businesses. We said all along that we were going to do our best to try to find other sources of money and turn those loans into forgivable loans. That was our our goal. I have to tell you, there was a tremendous amount of staff work that went into that, those programs. You know, it seems like there's just an application that goes out, but there's a ton of work that goes behind on behind the scenes. Council of Governments did a great job helping us with that, Sean did a lot of work and Monmouth did a lot of work as well. So thanks to Suzanne Duffner, she was great to partner with and and do things to make sure that we're doing things collectively as a community. So I'm going to turn this over to Sean for just a minute, so he can give you some more detailed information on some of the new, the programs that we have coming up. And then I'll kind of just finish off a couple of things and turn it back over to the regular business, so Sean.
Great, thanks, Tom. Good evening, Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity to talk. So yeah, we've got a lot going on and more to come. We're beginning to deploy the the CARES money that that city has been able to get from, you know, through the federal program. As of today, if you go to the Land Workforce Partnership website, you'll see our our new business grant program is live. This is a, something we really want to do is get more money out to the local businesses. So any local business in, you know, within the city limits of Independence, zero to five employees, you get twenty-five hundred dollars. Six and more, you get five thousand. You have to demonstrate an impact from COVID, at least twenty-five percent decrease in revenue. You can be kind of, you know, January to March, it can be year over year, but as long as you can kind of show it, you know, tied to COVID. But this one also, you know, some of the previous programs had some restrictions based on whether or not you receive federal assistance. This program does not have those restrictions, so it is a really good accessible program for a lot of our business owners. And we're actually really excited to work with Land Workforce Partners, you know, on on this process because they're going to handle all the administration of it. We basically just have to cut a check to them for the award. The nice thing about it is Land Workforce Partners is also about to launch an additional grant program. That essentially is identical to ours. So if you apply for ours and get our money, you'll essentially be able to almost automatically double your money through Land Workforce Partnership. And even if for some reason we we run out, if we get too many applications and we and we run out of money. The businesses will still be eligible for this this round four funding through Land Workforce Partners. So we're really excited to kind of be able to to have a two for there, make life really easy for our business owners. The, and I guess I should say a total amount that we're putting in is a hundred thousand dollars. That includes the 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 loans that we've forgiven, but that's still a pretty sizable quantity of money for our local businesses. Another program that you may have seen some advertisement for already is our technical assistance program. This is something that, you know, obviously things are changing in terms of the economy, in terms of the way people shop and the way people are buying things. And so we want to help our businesses adjust. And so, you know, it's one thing to just hand them money, it's another thing to, excuse me, give them the expertise, you know, to to help them, you know, figure out what need, what they need to do and help them do it. So we, for this, we've partnered with Indie IDEA, which is a local nonprofit working with micro enterprise development and a small business development center. And so essentially what's going to happen is a business owner will apply, they'll get an initial consultation with a small business development center advisor. Kind of a, you know, housing, you know, just overview, how, you know, tell me about your business, tell me how you're doing, tell me who your your customers are, you know, just kind of an overall, you know, perspective of the business. Then they'll get a digital review, so a a digital expert will essentially go online and Google the business and figure out what their online footprint looks like. Social media, you know, website, you know, have they taken over their Google My Business page and offer the, you know, and give the business owner feedback on what their online presence looks like. Then the business owner will be able to select from one of six assistance areas to be able to essentially be paired up with a with a consultant to do a specific project. It can be print design, it can be like kind of branding and identity work, it can be digital media strategy, it can be developing an e-commerce website. It can be content development for website for social media for for print. And then it can also be like a customer relationship management consultation. And what we're finding, we, like I said, we, I think we've been advertising for a week or two, we're targeting twenty businesses, we've got twelve already signed up. And so far, you know, I guess it shouldn't be too much of a surprise that the customer relationship management has been a serious topic of interest, you know. How do I better identify who wants to buy my stuff, you know, how do I better reach them, you know, and and what was the most efficient, effective way to do this? So there is still, like I say, you know, about eight slots left, you know, maybe maybe a little bit more depending on how things shake out. So we are still looking for additional business owners. This is a little more simple to get into, you just have to fill out the application and explain how COVID has impacted your business. Obviously, COVID can impact a business in a whole bunch of ways beyond just, you know, dropping a business's revenue. So it's a it's a pretty straightforward application process there. So and actually, one other interesting tidbit to come out of that, the the twelve businesses that we have gotten applications for. We asked them as part of the application, you know, what is your confidence level or what is your concern that you might go out of business essentially by spring? And there's a decent number of them that that concern is pretty high. And I think a lot of business owners are looking, especially the restaurants are looking at the winter here saying, you know, what are we going to do when we can't have the patio open and and have people outside? So in an effort to try to mitigate that a little bit, Courtney did some great work, Courtney Williams reached out to Munchies, which is a a local delivery company that that, you know, picks up from a restaurant and will take it, take it to your house. And Munchies has offered essentially free service for the entire month, months of October, November and December to any independence business. You know, this can be a restaurant, it can be a food product company, so like melting pot chocolate, if you want to order your toffee and don't want to leave your home, you can go and order ice cream. They'll also deliver beer and wine. So, you know, it's a great, great service and they're offering it completely for free for three months until the end of the calendar year. As an opportunity for these business owners to to essentially try this out and see how it works, you know, it might work for some, it might not work for others. But hopefully, you know, at least a few of our business owners will see some opportunity there and then be able to continue on with a new revenue stream for, you know, for the winter. And then the the last thing, this isn't business related, but we are just about ready to launch our utility, our utility bill support program. This is also funded with with our our CARES money. We're partnering with Mono Amato, which is a a kind of a mid-valley nonprofit organization that works with low income families, providing a variety of services. They've got a a satellite office here in Independence. It's a, excuse me, a pretty broad program, so essentially a person will apply to Mono Amato. The money cannot be used just for a water or sewer bill, it will, it's essentially can be used for any any utility bill. So water, sewer, power, garbage, telecom, gas, any of those. But the program will be available, at least initially, we're we're limiting it to households at fifty percent of median household income or less. And that number varies depending on how many, you know, how big your household is. And then you also have to demonstrate a a COVID impact. So someone in our house lost their job, someone had their hours cut, someone got sick and wasn't able to work, any of those types of things. But essentially, again, it's a pretty simple application process. Mono Amato has a lot of great bilingual staff and culture, you know, cultural competency. They are ready, they will be, they will be ready, willing to essentially fill out the application for somebody over the phone. So so if somebody does not have email or internet, they can call them and and have their application filled out that way. We just just got a contract signed today. They're going to have a flyer finished by the end of the week and I know they're already planning on reaching out to some of their existing clients as a, basically to field test, you know, the application process and make sure that it runs smoothly. So that when we start taking general applications, things can just kind of chug right along. But so that program will be open soon, you know, kind of for general applications and we'll run through the end of the calendar year. And I think that is everything that's on my list, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Irvine.
Yeah, Sean, I have one, is it possible to get just a. A brief blurb that kind of encapsulates everything you're doing for businesses and residents, so we can put it out on social media as well?
Yes, I'm actually, I'm actually working on a, on a, I'm trying, you know, there's, yeah, there's several opportunities, but you know, for business, I'm trying to figure out a sort of consolidated promotional email, social media thing. I hope to have that tomorrow.
Okay, happy to share from whatever you do then.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Irvine?
Yeah, and so let me just jump in and and finish here a couple of other things. So. You know, I I guess hopefully, you know, people out there, whether you're a business or you're a resident who's, you know, struggling to to make their utility payments are are really listening. And we're really going to promote these programs, you're kind of hearing it first because we're just kicking these off. But these are grants for businesses, I mean, and so these are opportunities that are being offered by the city and others. And a lot of this has just been the way the monies is rolled out through the CARES program and getting through the loan programs and everything else. It just, it just takes some time, you want to make sure one program finishes up before you jump to the next. The utility grant program is something that has been out there from other organizations, but this is something that, you know, we're specifically doing. And it's my hope that we, this kind of gets us through the end of the. And it's my hope that we, this kind of gets us through the end of the year. And while we're working on more of a donation type of utility support program, I I was really, really encouraged when we started reaching out to people who were struggling when we got to the point where we needed to continue shut offs, which we really haven't had to do. But we we certainly saw the need and and there were people in this community that just simply stepped up and donated their monies in order to make sure that people had continuity utilities. And that's something that we want to have a conversation about and at a policy level to figure out, are there programs that we can set up? Other jurisdictions have done that. Is there a desire and there a need? So we'll be putting together some proposals for you, hoping to get those done by the end of the year. We'll let this program kind of run us through that period of time. But hopefully have something in place so that this will not only go past COVID, but go into other types of economic downturns in the future. You've kind of had a little bit of a break. We haven't had a ton of business that we've been bringing you, but I'm sorry to tell you that's going to be accelerating. We have more stuff that's coming up, including some training for new counselors that I'm kind of planning on in December. I'd like to make sure that we get off to a good start. There's always some training done by council of governments and the Oregon cities. But there's some specific training that we probably have either our city attorney come in and do or there, there's an attorney, Bill Monahan, with Council of Government, who also does great trainings as well. So you can expect to seize that in December. And then in early January, I would really, really, really like to pick up on the council priority setting. As you know, on March 14th of this year, we met on a Saturday and I stole your entire afternoon so we could go sit around and figure out how we were going to deal with the COVID situation. Appreciated that time because we absolutely 100% needed it. But at the same time, we did not get any priority setting done. And we had earlier in that meeting had just, we're putting the finishing touches on the Vision 2040 Plan. And so I'm glad to say that we are now ready to really finish that. So your input was essential to getting that document finished. It's been sitting around for a number of months while we've, months while we've been dealing with COVID. But we are ready now to get that finished and are looking forward to getting it finished later this month, so. So that's my report. Do you have any questions for me?
Tom, I have a few questions. I touched base with you via email. Has the city been invoiced yet for a portion of funding for the Mid Willamette Valley homeless association?
Yeah, I reached out to to Jan Calvin and she was going to have the person who sent the invoices out resend them. I I double-checked my emails, I couldn't see it, so if it was. But we'll get them paid, that's not a problem, I just, just.
The intern coming in to help out with the popular financial report, is this somebody who's got experience doing that or is this going to be more experience for them to gain?
Both. Glory could tell you more, I believe that they're graduated accounting student, I I'm not sure if this is part of their master's program or whether they actually have their master's, but I know that they're they're pretty skilled and Gloria is obviously going to, you know, lead them through this, but that's my understanding of who it is.
Okay, the diversity and equity inclusion training, any opportunities for council members to participate in that?
Yeah, there will be. I I I'm not sure if you guys want to go through the first round. I'm certainly open up, my my goal here is to actually have a broad cross-section, taking it so it's not all police officers, not all, you know, city staff, but people coming from different areas, largely because that hands-on training really kind of is 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 difficult sometimes. And it's it's good to be with people that you don't work with necessarily every day. So I'm certainly open to it if if we have a counselor who wants to participate in that. We haven't assigned slots yet, and as a matter of fact, I'm going to be asking for volunteers from staff. I probably will someday make it mandatory, but at least initially, probably not, so if you're interested.
Yeah, I'm certainly interested, yeah. And also just kudos to the staff for everything they've done for the businesses and for residents. It's great to see some of our business owners breathing just a little bit easier.
Thank you. Agreed. Any other, any other questions? Okay, moving promptly forward, let's do the a little update on the 2040, and Tom, I guess it's.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor. I'm actually just going to do a really brief introduction here. I think everybody has very familiar with this point of our Vision 2040 Plan. We had an incredible amount of citizen participation. I I have to give a lot of compliments to Sean Irvine for really working hard on this plan as well as our consultant. Libby is here to kind of do a presentation, just to remind us all of where we've been and make sure that the that the community knows all that has been done. Our goal is to basically give you a copy of the report. I'm not sure if it's ready today, if it's not ready today, it'll be ready later this week as well as publish it so that everybody has the final report. But since we've had such a long break, what thought we'd bring Libby back and just walk you down memory lane and then talk about where we're at and then move forward. And it looks like Melissa's here as well, so listen for her, so. Libby, why don't you go ahead and take it away?
Okay, thank you, Tom. I'll see if I can share the screen here. Can everybody see the PowerPoint?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So thank you, Mayor and City Council. Melissa and I are very excited tonight to provide you an overview of the Independence Vision 2040 Plan. The agenda tonight, we're going to give a brief overview, as Tom said, a review of where we've been. We're going to spend a little time on the game changer projects that we came out of the process. And then some time for council to ask questions or provide comments. So the the process for the Vision 2020 engaged a broad group of community members. We had a Vision 2040 Steering Committee, mayor and council was involved, staff. And I would like to also point out what Tom said, Sean, amazing work on this project and his dedication to make sure that we got out to everybody in the community in multiple ways. And as a reminder, that this is a 20-year community-wide vision and action plan. So there are some big projects in here and the idea isn't that everything gets done in the first year. It's it's an aspirational document. It describes Independence in the year 2040 and identifies projects that are going to achieve that vision as resources become available, as opportunity arises. And I would say Independence is probably famous for being able to to move these projects forward past visioning efforts has led to many accomplishments. And I'm sure that this set of projects will as well. Most importantly, that this project, the vision plan is a is a accumulation of what we heard from the community. So if all of you remember, it seems maybe like a decade ago now, but in March of 2019, this project kicked off at Central High School. And over 2,000 community members participated in this broad and representative public engagement effort. And it resulted in over 600 community suggestions. And with Sean's input and encouragement, I think we accomplished some really fun and interesting engagement opportunities. An ice cream social, we had two online surveys. There was engagement with the Latino community. I think one of my favorite things that Independence tried is the the Hello Independence, where people could use text and interact with lamp posts in downtown Independence. We had a community photo contest, you'll see some of the photos that came from that, from that work, thought bubbles, town halls, open houses. And I think very importantly, towards the end of the process, we worked directly with stakeholders who are, will be your partners in getting these projects launched. And I said completed March 2020 at the City Council workshop session that Tom talked about. But of course, it's not completed, it's just getting started. So the group adopted the Vision of Independence 2040 early on in the process. And this vision of where the city wanted to go was used to provide guidance for the selected actions. This is one of the photos from the contest, this I believe was the winning photo the, from the, from the event there. You can see the values have here fit with the vision and also supported the development of the ideas and the actions. Small-town feel, local history, you know, the involved, can-do citizens, quality of life, the focus on the riverfront, community events. From all of the community outreach that we did, the action and ideas were organized into these five focused areas. So dynamic local economy, safe, healthy people, inclusive, involved community, vibrant, livable places, thriving schools and youth. So earlier I said we had 600 ideas and actions. Those were discussed by the community and prioritized. So in the action plan, there's a number of different types of projects based on priority. And at the, at the beginning of the of the action plan are what we're calling game changers. And these are the top-ranked projects that cut across all five focus areas. And because they include all of the focus areas, these are the projects that really advance the community vision. And they are fundamental change for independents that move it forward to to a better place to to towards the vision. Also in this list are advocacy projects, and I would say these are also game changers. But they are not within the purview of the city to actually be responsible for it. So these advocacy projects are very important and the city can play a key role in supporting them and being cheerleaders and providing resources as available to help move them forward. Third, we have focused area projects. And these are projects that fit squarely within that focus area. So they're very specific to a dynamic local economy or a safe, healthy people or inclusive, involved community. And not to say that these are not also important, but they are not the the big game changers, which are, I will go through them here shortly, they're they're more than just one action, they're, they are a series of initiatives. I also want to point out when you see the action report, because Independence does not like to run out of projects or actions to work on. In the appendix are some other projects that are are enticing and lead towards the vision. But they're meant to be a pool of ideas for for later. So kind of four types of of projects based on priority in the action plan. So these are the priority projects that the council and mayor worked on in March of 2020. And starting with the Southern Multimodal Transportation Access Strategy and Arterial. And this is a new arterial roadway with the goal of connecting South Independence to Highway 99 and improving connectivity and traffic flow and reducing congestion. Another game changer is expanding downtown revitalization and beautification. And this includes, this is one of the projects I think of as an initiative. But there's a series of sub-projects here, including west and southward expansion of the downtown district, upgrades to all downtown streets, crosswalks and sidewalk lighting, and new public art throughout the downtown. The downtown parking management plan made it onto the list of game changers. And this is to develop a parking management plan for downtown Independence to provide expanded parking capacity for local businesses, shoppers, visitors and special events. This next one, the Independent Independence Housing Strategy. This is again an initiative that involves both housing for the city's growing workforce and families, housing for seniors, including 55 and over independent living and continuing care, as well as housing that's affordable for lower-income families through a variety of programs. Very inclusive look at housing needs throughout the city. And then finally, the Recreation for All game changer. And this involves a series of projects related to recreation, including trails and pathways, lighting, accommodation for disabled access, park programs and facilities for both seniors and youth, new community recreation center and support for existing recreational programs in the community. So quite a few things in this recreation initiative. The three game changers that, again, are not in the city's purview, but are very important to achieve the vision, include local medical facility and health services, workforce training and skill development for both youth and adults, and early childhood pre-K programs. And I would say that through the community input, quite a few people, this, these three topics came up quite a bit from community members. And then finally, the third area of projects, these are the projects that land squarely in the key focus areas. So projects for the local economy, projects for the vibrant, livable places, safe, healthy people, thriving schools and youth, and inclusive, involved community. And at this point, I wanted to turn it over for questions. I also wanted to say, one of the things that came up since COVID-19 is a question for council to consider, which is, should there be an initiative, a game changer or an initiative in the safe, healthy people focus area that focuses on improving intergovernmental collaboration to respond to emergency like COVID-19? That, Tom, I'll turn it back over to you or Sean.
Well, yeah, I guess you have questions for for Libby. One thing I'll just add, we are going to be sending you the final document. It it really is pretty much in its final form. I want to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, we we look at this document as being a very high-level document. There's all the strategies that go into how to accomplish everything that's in there. There is a lot in there and it will take time. I think Independence has done a great job of implementing these plans, mostly because we really try to take the opportunities that come to us. We try to create opportunities, but we also take them as they come. And so what might be, you know, super important, day one might be held up by something, and so we find another opportunity to to slip another project in and we just get them all done. I'm in a hurry, so if you're. I'm in a hurry. So if you're, if you see a project in there that isn't highlighted as much as you would like or something in the document, don't worry about that. The reality is they're all important. Everything in that document's important as far as we're concerned. And we have, as the mayor tells me, 10 years to accomplish this 20-year vision.
10 years.
Questions for the presenters or for staff?
I'm impressed with this, John. We did good work on it, and I'm still excited about the content despite COVID.
You know, I'm really excited that 2,000 people participated. That, that really sets a direction. I like the things that, that have come out of there. It, it's good to have a reinforcement for some of the things that many of us have seen and, and had informal conversations, but putting it into a document, because when you're seeking funding or planning, all of a sudden having a, a document that says this is important to us is really good. I think this covers lots and lots of areas. Any additional questions? Because staff will be sending this out, so you can take a look at it again. And coming up in the next month or two, we'll be chewing on it and making a final approval. Did I have the timeline right, Tom?
Yeah, we're hoping to bring it actually back at the next council meeting, unless there's something that we really need to, to work on. But we will either adopt it or acknowledge it or, or whatever, so that we can make sure that it's, it's final and we can put it on the website. Well, we'll put the, you know, this copy of it, but make sure it's ingrained into our website and start making it really into what we're doing every day. So.
And again, council, you're to be commended for your good work in March. Sometimes we forget the good work that we do. Here it is, seven months later. I'm not hearing anybody jump up and down, so I'm going to assume that everybody's okay. We can keep moving forward.
Mayor, I would.
One super quick comment. I really want to thank Libby and your team for taking, I mean, our thoughts and our ideas and literally our visioning and putting it on paper and making this just coherent and cohesive so that we can, in the next 10 years, Mr. Mayor, accomplish our mission. So thank you very much for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Counselor. I was going to say, when Melissa and I were putting this PowerPoint together so many months after that we finished the work, those projects are very, very exciting. And we're very honored to have worked with all of you and the City of Independence and, and Sean. And thank you so much for the opportunity.
Well, there is housing available and new construction, so we'd be happy to add you to our community.
I, that, I, it's very tempting.
Okay, that, that was not a no, so anything other than a no is, hey, it could be.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for that.
And, and good comments, Counselor Martin Willis. Okay, we're going to continue moving forward. Council announcements.
Mayor, I guess we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead. We had a fee schedule. Excuse me. I.
I did the same thing a minute ago.
Thank you. Mr. Pestimer, I think you have the fee schedule in front. Sorry, folks, I was. I have to flip my page. So.
Yeah, so I'll, thank you, Mayor. We will need to make sure that after I do my presentation, that we have a public hearing. Whenever we're doing fee changes, we need to open it up for, for public comment. So before you are some fee changes, this is the time of year where we typically bring fee changes to you. I'll kind of walk through them really quick, but you can ask questions. There really isn't anything significant here. You have before you, kind of the red line version and then the final version after the resolution. But cleaning up a few things relative to the museum, you'll see the biggest change to this document is eliminating, eliminating everything in item D. This was something that we talked about over a year ago about items that were in the fee schedule related to the museum that weren't being charged, hadn't been charged and, and weren't, weren't current active items. And so we didn't want to just do something rushed, so we reached out to the advisory committee for the museum to make sure that they were good with the changes. These were the recommended changes. We had meant to bring this back quite a while ago, but, but now's the time to do it. So you'll see that just elimination of all those photo fees. If we see significant amount of photos, you know, coming back and, and a reason to charge it, we certainly will. With that, you know, with the new museum, we'll probably have better systems in place to charge it. But it wasn't really fair, because we, you know, we just hadn't been charging the fee for, for a long period of time. So we wanted to clean that up. And if we do bring it back, it will be two or three lines, not 20 some lines in the future. We have changed the, in land use application, I'm looking at under planning type H. We actually reduced some fees there as we had a better opportunity to evaluate how much took to do different things. So we, we broke a type design review into type one and type two, which had a consistent fee. We broke the type one out to be a little less, just because it's not quite as much work on our end, and we wanted to make that. We don't do, under item B, we don't do site design or final site design review anymore, so we've removed that. We also, on our final plat review, things have been simplified and they're much smoother on our end. So we lowered that fee as well from, so for people who don't have it in front of them, from $750 to $200. Driveway curb cut, we have made a minor, minor change there and eliminated the sidewalk permit. Item G, which is a new item, that is actually something that is in, it's already in our code. It's in resolution 2014 1392, which is actually in our development code. We don't really like having fees in our development code, so we wanted to make sure it was in our fee schedule. It, it still lives in that code. We'll probably take it out someday. But it's better for people who are trying to find things to go one to one place. They're going to naturally look at the fee schedule. They're not going to look through our entire development code, figure out how much they need to pay if they want to set up a zone of benefit. So we're trying to just clean that up a little bit. And really, that, that's the bulk of what we're going to do. We did increase the system development charges as we do every year, based on the cost of living increases. And so that is before you. And so I think you have the information. And, and I guess I'm available for questions.
Questions for the presenter?
Counselor. I have a couple, couple of questions, actually a suggestion. In that portion, under, under land use application fees, the type one and type two, and if you go also list type three, I think maybe it'd be useful to have some sort of reference to the code that, that defines those, just so you don't have to go hunting for that, and you know what a type two, a type three is.
Sure, so reference back to the development code.
Yeah, just make it a little bit easier for somebody trying to figure out what their fees are supposed to be. And then, under the Public Works, see the driveway curb cut. You have the, the, you added the current base and usage rate. See page nine. First of all, I don't really understand what a driveway curb cut is, and I don't understand what it means by current base. And I don't see quite what you mean by on page nine.
Well, those are great questions. I don't know if Kai is on the call. A driveway curb cut is essentially when someone is adding a new driveway to their property for whatever reason. So there's an existing curb there. So essentially, you're coming in and making a curb cut. We might also charge this. I'm not certain on new developments as well. But I also don't see anything on page nine related to the usage rate. So unless Kai can answer that, I don't have an answer for you.
Oh, somebody's waving their arms.
Counselor, the city recorder Johnson.
Um, actually, the current base and usage rates are for the line above that, the item B, construction-based water rate. You see that's lined out. It's just that the, the carryover that went over into that line instead of.
Okay, that, that makes a lot more sense to me. So, thank you.
Good, because I didn't have an answer otherwise. So, Counselor, yeah, if you want to, if someone makes a motion, if you're okay with it, we could just add those references in as kind of a scribbler's thing, just to make sure. But then remind you, Mayor, we also need to open this up for public.
Right, we will. Are there questions for the staff at this point? Okay, is there anybody that wants to make, I will open a public hearing or public comment. Anybody want to make any public comment? I don't see anybody rushing the doors, and I checked with the city recorder and she did not receive any, any written comment. So without objection, I'm going to close the public comment portion. Okay, this is an action item. And since we're, and I'm going to just do a, referencing what Counselor Takis was just saying. Mr. Pest American, since we're just doing the fees, the, the wording, can the wording and reference, that doesn't need to really be in a motion, does it?
I, I don't think so. We'll, we'll, you could just ask staff to make that minor modification and we will be glad to do it.
That's fine. Okay, so that's, that's a weaken, that's a cleaner thing. This is an action item. If anyone would like to suggest action.
I would like to. I move to adopt Resolution Number 20-1539, amending the C, the city fee schedule as presented.
I have a motion.
Second.
The second by Counselor Ransom Smith. Is there discussion? I hear no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is there any opposition? I hear no opposition. The motion carries. Thank you. Now we can go to counselor announcements.
I do have one tonight. On Friday at Indy Commons, I will be recording a half a dozen of our downtown. I guess the easiest term is ghost stories. And there will be no formal ghost walk this year, but by the last couple of weeks in the month or the last week in October and the first in November, you'll be able to go to a half a dozen locations, use a QR code to access these particular stories and do sort of a self-tour.
Great, sounds wonderful. Additional announcements? Okay, well, that's a very cute puppy. So again, as we close the meeting, Counselor Hicks, we're thrilled with the positive news about your family. And please know that we're all with you and, and thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you very much.
Would somebody adjourn us?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. So ordered. Have a pleasant evening. Good night.